Okay, call this Village of Green Hills council meeting to order for July 27, 2021. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halder?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Here.
Ms. Walther?
Here.
And Mayor Moore? Here. Here we have a prayer, Brian Maria Walther.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage, lest the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all and that everything that we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have the minutes of the previous council meetings, June 22, 2021, and session on July 13, 2021. Do we have any corrections?
I just want to make everybody aware that we're adding two words to it and everybody has a new copy on their desk there.
Okay. All right. Minutes stand approved. And we have no public presentations. Residents to address council, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff, but if you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers. Anybody?
I've already signed in, so you can start the clock. My name is Pat Andwan. I live at 32 Tommers Lane. I've owned property in the historic district for 43 years, worked restoring village as a contractor for 25 homes in the portfolio that was spent $8.5, I believe, million dollars of taxpayer money between 2006 and 2007. That turned out to be quite a bust. I've attended more official Green Hills meetings than most of you that are sitting here. I'm qualified and passionate candidate to claim a council seat in November. It's been 10 years since anyone dared to run for this council after the persecution inflicted on me in 2011, including assault, injury, false arrest. Brave Soul has also filed to unseat Mayor David Moore. Thank God. Godspeed, Thomas Crusoe. Current incumbents is Ms. Brokaw Hermes, Ms. Osmondoglu, Mr. Lee. They never genuinely elected. They were only appointed or happened to run on a ticket with no opposition. Imagine that.
That's not correct.
Let's go ahead. Pardon me, this is my time. There is an oath of office that the Municipal League recommends for public officials, and I think in lieu of Ms. Walther reciting her platitudes, it would be appropriate for this group, this body, to recite the oath that they took for public service at every meeting, because I think you've forgotten it. Going over the minutes of the 22nd of June, I noticed that Ms. Kovak failed to deliver on the public records request that she went into some detail telling what I had filed on June 9. It's been 58 days, Ms. Kovak. My question to you for a response is when? When do you intend to deliver those records? Mr. Moore, in the minutes, you said that the Municipal League was not going to give $700,000, only $373,000. Is this the American Rescue money, or is this some other pocket? By the way, where did the $220,000 of COVID funds go? Is it this beautiful throne that you've built for yourself? Why are these funds not reflected in the official budget? Another question. Hopefully, I'll get a response. Executive sessions, Mr. Forbes, should not be a guessing game. It should be either sale, not sale or purchase, it's either sale, purchase. It shouldn't be so obscure that the public would have no idea what you're talking about. If you're going to invoke an executive session, stick to it. Why did the auditor reject Resolution 2021-14F? What was missing when you filed it? It's pathetic that council was wringing their hands-
Okay, Ms. Andwan, your time is up.
-on how to gag the public-
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Off camera-
Will you take your seat, Ms. Andwan?
And not pleasant.
Take your seat, please.
I hope you're all uncomfortable.
Okay, moving on. Reports of village officials and Municipal Manager Yvonne Kovak.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to just double check, make sure there's no one else who wanted to speak?
Oh.
Just-
Anybody change their mind?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of comments that I'll make in response. The last comment was about the COVID money not being included in our budget. That was at the directive of the county. The communities, no community, was to include that, and it's a good thing that, it was a smart thing to do because the figure has changed. It's dropped only about to half of what they originally projected, so that's why that was not included in our budget. As far as the public records requests, you should have received two responses today, two of your four that you submitted. Timing wise, we have a limited staff. We have an audit going on where a lot of those records are tied up right now. We don't even have access to them, so we will get those requests completed as soon as possible. I also didn't have time to prepare our written report, but if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Law Director?
Thank you, Mayor. No report tonight, but I would ask council if you would consider adding at the end of the meeting an executive session to discuss the sale of real property.
Clerk of council, any questions? Okay. Clerk of council, time you call.
Number four.
All right. Chief of police, Neil Ferdoman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're happy that and hopeful that the pandemic may in fact be taking a break, but we have taken the opportunity to get back and interact with the community, and I'd like to give you just a few examples of that. Officer Carl Holbrook, seated in the back, would you stand briefly, Carl? Carl is officially Facebook famous. One of our residents posted on Facebook the kind act that he did. Started out with a sad offense where a young boy's bike was stolen, and we have continued to search for that bike to no avail. However, Officer Holbrook felt so bad for the young man, who had a pretty rough year, that he contacted me and asked about the possibility of replacing it with one of the found bicycles that we have in storage. We couldn't really find one that would have been an equivalent. We have very generous citizens in our community that have donated to a fund just for that purpose, to help out those in need, so Officer Holbrook took it upon himself to go down and actually had to look in the back store room at Walmart with the manager and found one remaining bike that was identical to the one that the young man lost. So he took it over, and if you've had a chance to glance at our monthly report, you've seen the smiles on the young man's face, and it was just a good moment, and it was a good act on Officer Holbrook's part. What I wrote to him is, "What you did this weekend is the very definition of above and beyond the call of duty. It was an action that changed a life, restored hope, and made a difference. You are commended for your efforts in serving our community. Please keep up the good work." Not to be outdone, Officer Blake Mayberry was talking to some citizens who told him that their little girl was turning four the following day, so he came back to headquarters and gathered up the gift bag. We always have some toys and different little goodies for kids on hand, and took a card. And those over and while he was there, some of the other kids were around, and he met a young man by the name of King and played some basketball with him, and he showed him all his police gear. Sergeant Patton and Officer Francis, who was just here with Officer Holbrook, went over to the swimming pool on the 4th of July. A grandmother had accidentally locked her grandchild in the car, and they were able to pretty swiftly get the young grandchild out, and we received word from Brenda Davis, who works downstairs in our administrative offices. She said, "I just spoke to a patron from the pool whose grandchild was locked in the car," and our officers responded. The woman had nothing but praise for the officers responding. She said they were calm, reassuring, and persistent in their efforts to free the child safely. Once she and our officers made it much easier for them with their calm demeanor. Please share the appreciation as well as my own for how wonderful the department is, their testament to my community. As the caller told me, our good police do not hear praise nearly enough and are not recognized in today's world, and I wanted to be sure that they heard from her and her family. Officer Zach Braun, who has been on day shift recently, noticed two ladies walking from the area of a disabled and smoking vehicle in the church parking lot over at Wynton and Sharon. He ran the tag and determined the owner responded to that home and found the women just making it home. It was a mother and a daughter, and the car broke down on them. They had all their fresh groceries inside, so he took the daughter with him, went over, retrieved, loaded all the groceries into the cruiser, and we made a grocery delivery. Once again, Officer Holbrook was dealing with a resident in our A section. She was experiencing problems with some kids playing basketball in her neighborhood. He worked out a solution and helped her out with some points that solved the problem, and we received a thank you note from her that said, "Thank you for helping with the basketball hoop. Thank you to all police and staff for always helping us." We are preparing in the next few weeks to work with our school officials on the opening of the new Wynton Woods South campus. There will be an orientation session for both our officers and the teachers. Our officers will be going through the building to ensure that they know where everything is and they're prepared for any kind of responses that might happen there, and then we'll once again be in that building to conduct some safety training for the teachers in preparing for any kind of police event that might happen there. It's in our newsletter, and I know that this will be pointed out again by another council member, but we have, the movie night series continues this week in the picnic shelter on July 30. It will be there rain or shine. It will be under the shelter, so we're looking forward to seeing the kids and the families come out for that event. During the month, the past month, we made 18 criminal arrests. Those include arrests for robbery, disorderly conduct, OVI, drug possession, and open container. We responded to 207 incidents, including 30 squad runs, 13 noise complaints, 12 parking complaints, 12 warrants served, nine trouble runs, nine lockouts, eight animal complaints, seven disabled vehicles, seven intrusion alarms, and seven domestic calls. We provided mutual aid to our surrounding areas in nine instances, issued 38 traffic citations, 29 warnings, and investigated eight traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments or questions of the chief?
Chief, do you know what the date is for the school opening?
The school opening-
The ribbon cutting is August 10?
I don't, again, I don't either.
It's in your-
The actual classes starting-
Classes begin August 23.
Okay.
What I would like to mention, since you gave me the angle to remind me, thanks, Mr. Halder, mark your calendars for Cooking with the Cops. We'll be over at the picnic shelter on Thursday, August 26 at 6:00 p.m. We'll be grilling dinner for our residents. We're also going to have the AAA show up, and they'll have some goodies there. We'll have our equipment over there, so kids and families can take a look. Mr. Lee, we missed you last year, so maybe you'll be able to show this year.
Oh, I've caught him.
Absolutely. Great.
He's an expert.
He is. Thank you.
I know that firsthand with the things, yeah. And what is this located?
It's going to be at the picnic shelter, right next to Malloy's.
What time?
6:00 p.m.
All right, thank you, chief. And I have mayor's court report for the month of June. The ending bank balance is $13,903.45. Checks to be issued, State of Ohio, $1,415.30 to Hamilton County, $51, and to the Village of Green Hills, $5,531.21. And that's all I have. Committee reports, Service and Streets, Jennifer Osmondoglu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second and third phase of the sidewalk concrete cutting program has begun.
Uh huh.
It's beginning this week. I'll just let you know real quick, the streets that they're going to be working on, Adell Walk, Burley Circle, Bayham Drive, Beckford Drive, Briarwood Lane, Brompton Lane, Bachman Street, Ingram Road, Farragut Road, Falcon Lane, Flanders Lane, Foxworth Lane, Gambier Circle, Jennings Road, Japonica Drive, and Hamlin Drive.
Again, the sidewalk cutting is for trip hazards that are less than two inches, so they're trying to avoid replacing the whole pieces of sidewalk, which is a major cost saving. So that's exciting, so that'll be a few weeks probably, hopefully, working on that. That's my report.
Recreation cable TV, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are still moving forward with Harvest Fest on Saturday, October 2. It's going to be a mini Harvest Fest from 4 to 8 p.m. Still going to have vendors, we're going to put some music, some activities, and our newest thing this year is Chalk the Walk. So we're going to have the police department and other businesses around sponsor this Chalk the Walk. You basically come out, you take a little square of the sidewalk, decorate it, and then these businesses will come out and pick their winner, and they'll be highlighted at their company, and then if they have prizes that they want to give, they can do that. It's a way to kind of bring the businesses into the whole shebang as well. So we're going to give that a try this year and see how that goes. And then also, as chief mentioned, we have our movie night this Friday. It's Spy Kids. We will, we have on the ad that starts at 8:45. The event itself starts at 8:45, but the movie will start when it's dark enough to see it on the screen. So I'll be hanging out there from 7:15 when he's set up until the movie starts, so feel free to swing on down. That's all I've got.
Now, is it lawn chairs and watch the movies, or sit in the cars and watch the movies?
It's, yeah, there's picnic tables underneath the shelter, so right now, we're planning to have it a little bit off to the side, so you could still sit in your car and watch, but it's probably better if you bring a lawn chair, just so you can sit over in front of the screen. But if it rains, we're going to move it underneath the picnic shelter. We've got a good spot for it on the pool side that fits just underneath, and we could put a tarp over the back, and in that case, there's the picnic shelter tables in there.
Great.
Yep.
Bring your bug spray.
Yes.
Yeah, Mrs. Metz, there is a gentleman from the insurance company that he said that he would like to be in contact with you to be of assistance and help during the Harvest Fest.
Okay.
He always has helped me out, and he has different other people that work for him, and they will-
Is that the State Farm?
State Farm.
Kent?
Kent, yeah.
He's actually my interest partner.
You already have?
Yeah.
Okay, made a contact.
He knows my name.
Okay.
Okay.
And then also, I wanted to bring this up, I don't know if you were aware or not, but I found out that Waycross does a service during the summertime and sometimes have a scholarship, sometimes they don't, depending on the money, but there are classes in there for children of ages, from seventh grade till 12. And they completed a film right now, and it's on YouTube at the Waycross, and it's called Gambler's Game.
Oh, perfect.
And they had students there, they had about eight students there, and then he said, "It's simply just go to the YouTube at the Waycross Media." And they did, not past year, but the year before, they did a sequel to the one year after, you know, before that. So they're very creative-
Yeah.
And they teach all these students how it all works.
Yeah.
So it's worthwhile doing-
I wonder if I can't get like a highlight or something from, we actually haven't had a Waycross meeting in a while-
I know.
...it's been canceled.
I know.
But I can get with Chip and some others and see if we can't maybe put a highlight or something on the website.
There used to be an agenda that they sent out, and then there was also the minutes of the agenda. I don't know if you've seen that or not.
We haven't even had a meeting, so there aren't even minutes, so-
They're not even having a meeting on Zoom?
No, we, the last one we didn't have, then the next one hasn't come up yet.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I can gather some information, and we can put a highlight on that out on our webpage or something.
Okay, that happens every summer, because I'm interested in case somebody, some kid cannot grow because doesn't have the money to, and make sure that there is somehow some kind of scholarship for him to go there.
That's perfect.
So this is the movie, it's Gambler's Game.
Great, thank you. All right.
All right, moving on. Community Development, Jeff Alder.
No report at this time.
Safety, Melanie Armies.
We are meeting before our next council meeting, which is August 24 at 5:30. I believe laws and rules will be the same night as well. That's it. Thank you.
Finance and Audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, at your place tonight is the highlights page from the monthly report provided by the Village Finance Director. As I had warned, the months of June and July are going to be interesting. This is one that's been interesting in a good way. You'll notice that the income tax receipts for the month of June 2021 are substantially up. I think this is primarily due to the fact that the taxes were delayed, the deadline delayed till May 15. So we'll certainly keep an eye on that, but we are running ahead on that. Real estate taxes are on target. General Fund is up roughly 10% and the current general fund balance as of June was $1,601,836.7. On the expense side, staff has been very frugal in that regard. Its expenditures are down roughly 10% over last year at this point in time. Yet, we've expended approximately one-third of our appropriated funds as of the end of June. Obviously, there are more expenses that come out later in the year, and there have been no transfers to the general fund. Let's see, have any questions? That's the end of my report.
All right, in our governmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walther.
Mrs. Thomas instructed we're having a meeting on August 24th, that will be at 6:00 p.m. right before our council meeting, and there will be laws and rules and possible changes will be discussed for rules of council. So that would be an important meeting. Also, later on, I would like to make the motion to amend the agenda, Mr. Mayor. And I also wanted to announce that for the first time, they are informing since the pandemic, the American Legion, the auxiliary group, is going to have the first and only meal. They used to have once every month or so. And it would be on August 20 from 6 to 8, and the tickets for sale is $10, and it would be tacos and rice and beans and chips and salsa and so forth. And this is a major move that we are trying to do there because of the pandemic, we have not had any other meetings there. So if anybody's interested that is hearing this, please contact anybody in the American Legion, or perhaps, you know, ask me, or I'll be happy to direct you there. And I conclude my report, sir.
Okay. I'll answer questions. All right, we have no unfinished business. New business, Resolution Number 2021-16-SNS, Resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills, Ms. Osmondoglu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 2021-16-SNS, Resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below, and whereas the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collected as other taxes. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the Village Council hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the Auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number 597-0070-014900. Address 127 Burley Circle. Owner, Cosalina Alena. Cost $155.02. Parcel number 597-0020-004500. Address 27 Gambier Circle. Owner, Colburn, Robert, and Deborah. Cost $232.27. Parcel number 597-0012-006700. Address 26 Jewel Lane. Owner, Crawford, Matthew. Cost $155.02. Parcel number 597-0030-000500. Address 1 Flanders Lane. Owner, Dolan, John. Cost $108.67. Parcel number 597-0030-010200. Address 348 Ingram Road. Owner, NREAVVVILC. Cost $339.39. Parcel number 597-0031-007000. 61 Handle Lane. Owner, Paul Hayne, Laverne. Cost $153.99, for a total of $1,144.33. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I adopt, or I need to adopt this resolution.
Second. Moved in second. Any comments or questions? None? Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Halder?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number 2021-16-SNS passes. All right, municipal calendar, or do we want to do the motion to modify the agenda now? Okay. Want to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add an executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss the sale of real estate, and there will be no action taken after this executive session, and will be adjourned after that, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Walther?
Aye.
Halder?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Mr. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, municipal calendar, got a couple meetings?
August 24 at 6 o'clock, laws and rules.
Same day, 5:30. Safety.
Movie night, July 30, 8:45 p.m. Harvest Fest, October 2, 4 to 8 p.m. And Jeff, do you want to mention the beautification, or you want me to go ahead?
No, you can.
The second round of nominations for the beautification award are due August 23. This- This first round was highlighted on the website, I believe, weren't they?
I don't know where that names were from.
Can you go to the journal?
It'll be in the journal.
In the journals.
That deadline is this Friday.
Okay, so check out the journal to see the previous nominations, but the next round nominations are due August 23rd.
And if I could add on to that, we just encourage you to, if you've seen somebody that's really maintained their property well, and, you know, we want to give them credit for doing that, and we're picking two per side on either side of Wynton, and try to, you know, foster that kind of thing happening as many places as possible.
Doesn't even have to be the most spotlighty yard with all the color and beautiful flags and everything. It can just be a really well-maintained yard that someone's done a really good job keeping out.
And there's some prizes with this, too, as well.
Yes, there are. And then-
Major awards. We've got the chief's barbecue on the 26th.
Yes, the 26th. I'm sorry, August.
August.
And tomorrow is the concert on the Commons, along with the car show, so the cars will probably start showing up around 4:00, the concerts at 7:00.
Will there be a Tesla at the car show?
No, there won't be.
The American Legion, the Village Auxiliary, have the dinner on August 20th, 6:00 to 8:00.
Okay. All right, and so adjourn into executive session now?
Well, you need a motion and a second.
Oh, yes, okay. We need a motion now to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. I'm going to executive session, please.
To discuss the sale-
To discuss the sale of real estate.
Second.
Moved in second. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Osmonoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.